Hi, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? All right, hearing none. I would ask for a motion to approve the meeting of October 28th minutes. Is there a motion?
October 14th, maybe?
October 14th, maybe.
Well, how come I have this?
Or not?
28th.
It should be October 15th.
Okay.
Tonight's 28th.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd make a motion, we approve them. Subject to corrections when Robert's ready there, I know he's waiting.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any corrections or deletions besides Rick's spelling of Rick's name?
I took off something else, I'm just gonna tell you right now.
That's not how you spell it?
The only other thing I see under Members' Concerns, that name should be Mark O'Shea, not Forche.
Where are you looking, Bob?
Rutland County solid waste.
Paragraph eight?
Yeah, paragraph eight.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
No F?
O'Shea, yeah.
Good fine Irish lad.
Ah, thank you.
And he'd be that proud of you, Bob. Is there any other questions or deletions? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just note that I abstained from the vote because I was not here.
Okay. Cash, do you have anything that you'd love to report?
Under the highway?
Yes.
We were just notified today by private polling, planning commission, that we've been awarded for water quality projects, grants from grants and aids, the E.C. for a total of fifteen thousand one hundred with the town share of that would have to be three thousand twenty dollars and the state, or, yeah, the state share would be twelve thousand eighty dollars for improvements, and we're gonna try to earmark that with another project. We're actually, Kelly and I are gonna, at the roundtable discussion tomorrow in Rutland, we're gonna discuss some of that, what we can put together with other, another grant to do another section of that same road to get the whole project completed. I need approval for a paving bid for four driveways that we had to cut the asphalt out to replace culverts. Two of them being on North Shoesberry Road and two of them on East Clarendon Road. The paving outfit that we got ahold of, the total will be five thousand six hundred seventy-two dollars, which is a fourteen hundred and eighteen dollar per driveway average. I'd like approval of that from the select board if they reached out to other paving companies local around here and their buddies, I've been working on them since summer and they're all busy and most of them don't return phone calls.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, Heidi, what are we looking, do we have some money in paving that we can?
Be, uh, paving.
Okay. Is there any other concerns?
How many ton are we looking at, Cash? Do you know?
Oh, I didn't bring that paper with me.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's basically not gonna take a lot of material, it's gonna be the labor and the machine work.
Yeah, okay.
And, I mean, the warning, probably it'll take a big truckload. What I found out was comparing that per ton of what they pay versus in place of what we paid, they pay a lot more.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
So basically, you're paying more for the moving of the machine and because they've gotta go to so many different places.
Four locations.
Makes sense.
Who's the outfit?
The outfit is, uh, Pres- Precision Paving, and actually, they're out of Randolph, and I happened to get ahold of them, they were actually here in Rutland working. And they showed here, I actually have the insurance certificate and everything to give to Heidi and stuff to, if it gets approved. Two of them on North Shoesberry Road and two on East Clarendon Road. As of Friday, we finished roadside mowing and if somebody sees where we missed an area, let us know, but-
Hold on, there's a motion.
Oh, go ahead.
All right, so there's motion made, seconded. Any other discussion on that motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, that's it. Uh, Friday, we finished roadside mowing, and like I said, if anybody has an area that we might have missed, we're pretty sure we got all the town done. Let me know. Matt, we, and I don't know how to address this about the propane bids.
If we could piggyback on your propane account stuff so that we could get a better deal on propane for a fire station. Right now, we're paying like three bucks a gallon of propane. You guys are paying what, a dollar fifty a gallon? Yeah, I don't know, but, like with the diesel fuel, we'll pay the bill.
We are not under any contract for propane and we haven't been for over a year, so we're probably paying the same as what you are. We haven't gone out to bid on propane for at least two years.
Have you got any bills lately on that? That we could?
I'm working on a contract, uh, um, for now with, um, one of the gals from Kesar and it's just been difficult getting her to come back to me. She did give me a number that was pretty, um, pretty good number, but she wanted to inspect the town garage and, um, the transportation and then get back to me. So I've just been trying to follow up with her on getting an okay on that number, which I was gonna talk to you about once I get an okay on that number.
Well, yeah, we have to stick with Suburban for a few years, we have a deal with that, one more year.
Contract? Yeah.
Yeah, we, um, we're with Kesar, we have been now for, since I came on the board.
With propane?
Yeah. Um, and we've, uh, last year, we just rode the market. Um, actually, it's probably about two years now, we rode the market. And-
Yeah, went from two, went from three forty-nine down, down to two-six, I think the last one was two-six-five, it's been on hold.
Maybe in a year or two, I'll come back and ask you guys again about it and stuff, once we get this contract stuff, things up with Suburban.
Yeah. We would like to go on the record, ask, we, we are interested in doing that.
But also, you have another year's contract with Suburban, or?
Yeah, it's a deal with, we, we got the furnace basically for almost nothing, as long as we stick with them for like three or four years or something, or whatever it was, and, and so it was a deal like that, it was, it was, uh,
Well, for-
It was a good deal, you know, for, you know, we're getting the furnace for about nothing, but-
Mike's point, it's on the record now, so, you know, consider we'll just keep an eye on our cost, you keep an eye on your cost, and see where we can go with it, does that sound good?
Yep.
Cash?
All I have.
Have you contacted, uh, an electrician?
Haven't. The lights are now working in the shop that-
They are working?
Third bay. Yep.
Okay.
I had to talk to him. Just talked, sweet talked the lights, that's all.
We used, we used Snickowitz at the grain chow, we used Stubbs at the grain chow, just FYI on that. And a lot of rebates out there for LED lighting right now. Lots of rebates for LED lighting.
Is it, if you're looking to approve your lighting?
Something you could help me with?
Sure can.
Electrician you used last time could help you too.
A Dave? Yep. But he's headed to Florida, like, next week.
Oh, he is?
Don't know.
So the lights go out now, tough.
Yeah, we'll talk about cash afterwards, there's a bunch of rebates available for that.
Anything else, Cash?
That's all I, oh, the grater's up and going. We got it going last Wednesday afternoon. Seems to be working pretty well.
Should be able to get all the roads put to bed.
Should, we're hoping. Uh, was, last year, we started plowing two weeks from today. Snow, that quick.
Don't jinx it.
Stop it.
The roads gotta get put to bed.
It's coming.
First.
Anybody have any questions for the road commissioner?
Cash, did you ever hear back from Rutland Town regarding, uh, the more, the roadside more?
Haven't heard yet, we gotta get, they they're kinda stuck on that figure of the ten thousand. We gotta, gotta get one Byron again and-
Do a little more talking.
Talking and stuff, and, um, do I need, do I have approval to, do I have to bring it to the board, or what? What's the board's? If he comes up with a ten thousand dollar figure for a buyout? For the, for the more?
From the Rutland Town?
From Rutland Town.
Yeah, so.
For their, to buy out their section of their ownership. What happened was, there was some extensive work done on the deck that we ended up doing because they actually blew apart on us. Um, just from fatigue and getting older on the deck. The parts cost just a touch over a thousand dollars. And I put a bug in Byern's here that we'd be interested in buying the more out for eighty-five hundred, buying their share. They were kinda stuck on the ten thousand dollar figure at that time. But after this more kinda blew apart on us, the parts were just over a thousand dollars and Byron suggested that Rutland Town would pay for them parts a hundred percent if we'd give them ten thousand. So you can look at it roughly that you know, nine thousand and we buy half the parts, or, or ninety-five hundred, we buy half the parts, or ten thousand and-
What do you think of that piece of equipment? I mean, is it something that you think we'd get-
It has.
Years out of them?
The tractor itself is decent running tractor, it's got a couple oil leaks, that needs some extensive, somebody that has a know-how more than I have, I feel that it might be a steering motor or something, it might cost a little bit, but I-
Still cheaper than-
It's, it's, it's cheaper than trading it in, buying the one that's gonna cost us forty, fifty thousand, we can actually get, the way it runs right now, we can get at least two, three more years out of it, we should.
Did we authorize any capital expenditures out of the?
Well, she's looking, Cash, uh, what year is that tractor?
Oh, I know.
And how many hours on it?
Nineteen ninety, I believe it is.
So, so they're, they're thinking that tractor's worth twenty thousand right now, if you're buying for ten thousand it out?
Yeah, if you, if you strip that tractor down just out of fire mox and full wheel drive, it's, you know, it's like a twelve thousand dollars without the more on it, no problem.
How many horsepower?
It's about seventy horse.
So we've-
You know, it's full wheel drive, cab, brand new tires on the back.
What was that, Heidi?
We've budgeted for sixty-five thousand dollars for capital expenditures this year.
Well, I'll go out on a limb.
Reading your mind.
And I'll make a motion and authorize nine thousand dollars. See where it goes.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second Robert's motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
They could have the check two days from now.
Hey now.
Next Monday.
Next, yeah, next check on's next Monday, darling.
All right, hearing no other concerns, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, anything else? Uh, warrants are right here, if anybody wants to come and check them out. There's no guest, unless Mike, you wanna stand up and as a guest and say anything?
He must have something to say, Mike.
Brother Shaducci?
Uh, any public comments? Full business. New business, budget meeting schedule. Uh, we tentatively, been throwing this around a little bit, and the suggestion was made that we would start on our regular Monday night meetings, two per month, to start off, possibly starting at five o'clock. And six o'clock, we'd go to our regular meeting. Seems to me like that we would probably get a better turnout.
Makes the most sense to me.
And that would be our first meeting in November?
Yes.
Yeah.
So two weeks from now, okay.
So, uh, Heidi, my question to you would be to, given the fact that we're going to have tentatively an hour, I mean, it may run over a little bit.
I will have everything organized and ready for you.
Thank you, that's where I was going with this. All right. So to consider five o'clock budget meeting starting, and we'll, we'll do this, uh, and if we have something, a necessity where we have to meet on an odd day, then we can discuss it.
Is our next meeting on a Wednesday?
Thirteen.
It's the thirteenth? Yeah, 'cause we did not, we're not meeting on the, uh,
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day, so it's the thirteenth.
It'll be on a Wednesday?
Wednesday, yep.
Then we'll go back to Monday.
But we, we wanna make sure we get notified, some of us will forget that short now. Oh, if you have a question.
So you're changing budget meetings only to five P.M.?
Five to six.
Five to six?
Yes.
Beginning November thirteenth?
Yes.
It'll be on Mondays after that.
And then we'll, it'll be on Mondays after that, though. That's the-
On the regularly scheduled?
On the regularly scheduled meeting days.
Because of the holiday, we're not gonna be here on a Monday.
Oh, so you're only doing it for the holiday?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay?
Gotcha.
All right, I'm, I don't want a motion on that, we're just making a schedule and stuff.
Do it.
Uh, we want to, um, post that too, Kelly, all right?
That's it. On the internet?
Yeah. Well, internet and-
And around town.
And around town.
The normal posting.
Because some folks like to come in and see what we're doing with their money. Right, Mike?
I got something to say now.
Should've left you sleeping, god darn it.
Because you guys are working, because the select board and the town is working with us on things like diesel fuel and talking about propane and buying, buying together, which is saving the fire department money, which means, in fact, our budget goes a little further and then we don't have to go forward and ask for more money every year. So this is a pretty good relationship. More money we can save, less money we need to ask for to increase our budget because prices are going up every day.
Did I comment to that?
Yeah.
Thought we were gonna save your money so you cut your budget back down.
I realize that. I realize that.
So Cash, after all the hydrogen, I mean, all the cover flushing and stuff, your budget's gonna cut in half now, is that, is that what happened?
You, you picked the wrong night to open your mouth.
Say no now, guys.
That old saying, wanna be seen, stand up, wanna be heard.
Speak up. How many more bridges did you need flushed this year?
Well, they're all done for the season.
Thank you for doing the cover bridge.
I don't know, when we do reports that, uh, around voting time, maybe that might be a good thing to let the fire department, you know, put in there and say that we're helping each other out, and it might be a little plus on your side, too. Uh, Coburn Court renaming. And what happened was we, I got a email, I forwarded it to all the select board members. Don't remember the guy's name, gentleman's name, Tim, something like that.
You want the email, what?
Yeah. Here's. Let me read this. I received an email from Tyler Hammerson today, and he and I also spoke to Mike, this is Kelly writing this. Anyway, um, he also spoke to Mike in regard to Coburn Court. His issue was that no one had gotten back to him in regard to the renaming. Apparently, although it is a state-owned park, the town is responsible for the renaming. Mike and I went to the post office today, uh, to find out exactly how the addresses were listed with the post office. After a long conversation with Tyler, we have come up with a decent resolution that would less impede on the homeowners in regard to address change. Basically, the proposal is to drop the name Coburn Court altogether. But keep Fire Lane, so basically, the new road names would look like fifty-seven, this is an example, fifty-seven Fire Lane Three, or twenty-two Fire Lane Three A, or thirty-eight Fire Lane Three B, this is just examples. Uh, there would need to be a new sign located at the beginning of the road by Mike's Country Store called Fire Lane. And because it is near a state highway, I believe that particular sign has its own set of V-Trans standards as far as size, et cetera. But then the park itself would have either three different signs or one centrally located sign, which clearly shows each lane. And you did explain that really well, I appreciate that. Uh, Kelly.
The, um-
I just wanna add one other thing, we're responsible for those, making those signs.
Yeah, that's great, um-
Out of what budget?
So, yeah, so that comes out, you have a signs budget there, buddy. Um, the, uh, I thought that their, their issue was with the Fire Lane A, B, and C or whatever, though. I thought that's what they wanted us to, I thought that was their biggest beef with it. And now that, now they're kinda recanting on that and saying we can keep the Fire Lane A, B, and C?
But here's the thing. To my understanding, there's three different entities weighing in. It's the post office, Google Maps, and the, and the state in general.
Well, I could give a flying rip about Google Maps, but the, the reality is that I thought it was um, E nine-one-one was giving us the hard time with the Fire Lane A, B, and C.
Okay, so what I got from Tyler, 'cause I was copying on an email as well.
Yes.
Says I think the main issue was just the road names themselves, as the town called it Coburn Court, Fire Lane Three, Three A, and Three B. And what I have is just Fire Lane Three, Three A, and Three B. And then he goes on to say, in the ideal world, these would all be separately different road names, but would be similar to indicate an area, but also not too confusing. So most towns with areas like this will name it like Rose Road, Sunfire Street, Clover Way, or Deer Drive, Moose Lane, Coyote Road. And basically said, he doesn't care what the road names are called, but he wants them all different.
So they, so they're not gonna allow the A, B, and C then, is my guess?
No. Because thi- this is what came up, if you recall, Mike, uh, Robert, I don't think you, you weren't on the board at the time, uh, when this nine-one-one came in, because we had East, East Road and East Street. And there was a big hubbub about that one, nine-one-one, if you recall, and we had to go and change it, and I think you got the same situation here.
Well, this came straight from Tyler, those were his suggestions.
Yeah.
Is he the E nine-one-one guy?
Yes. So, he thought that they would be the best suggestions and just cut Coburn Court out altogether.
And he was okay with the A, B, and C?
Those were his suggestions.
Uh, seriously? March?
Well, when Janet was here, she tracked down, the agencies weren't talking to each other on it. When she tracked it down, they said it was okay to leave it the way it was, but one agency hadn't told the other one. That was the big beef. So now, all of a sudden-
We're back to it again.
Right.
'Cause we sent, 'cause at that time, we sent a letter, and we said that we're not, we're not changing the names, because we had been, we had been, um-
But they told Janet that was okay, it was just that one, one branch of this hadn't notified the other. So now it's-
So I was copying on that letter as well, that said that the board was frustrated over the perception of the situation, and the select board proposed that the road simply be named One, Two, and Three, and we'll leave it to the housing authority to give the streets distinctive names for E nine-one-one purposes. And then Tyler responded saying, I haven't heard what the town wants to legal, like-
Right, and that's why I got the, I got the email, because somewhere-
That was his response to her-
Between the town and nine-one-one, the ball got dropped, whether they lost paperwork, or we didn't send paperwork, or they didn't have any kind of bonding discussion.
If they're good with leaving it and just dropping the Coburn Park, fine, I, I don't care, I mean, that doesn't make a difference to me, but the again, I just think that we're gonna be back at this in three months when they look at it again and they change their mind.
You need a letter stating that if you drop that, it's okay.
'Cause every three to six months, this has come up.
That's what this letter says here.
But this, uh, the bottom line was, when we had that discussion, it was, when we finally talked to him on the phone, it was after we went to the post office. In the post office, they, you know, they, I think they think like we are thinking. Why should we make those people who live in here have to change all their checkbooks and mailing address and everything else? So we tried to stick with what the post office had, and we, then we came back down here, had a discussion on the telephone, and that gentleman said, you know, that sounded good, so when we look at this, this is the least obtrusive way of doing this for the people that live there. So-
I guess I just don't understand why this is the town's issue and not the housing authority.
I asked him that, and he says because-
Because otherwise, we would be responsible for every private road in town, right?
Well, here's the catch. It's the state says that any private road has to have a street sign on it, and that's the town's obligation. Am I correct, Kelly? And so he sent um, a couple of state statutes that do follow that discussion, so.
All right, so to move this forward, I make the motion that we go ahead and pursue dropping Coburn Park off the road names and getting those signs done.
Is there any further discussion?
Nothing other than, I agree with Robert, we'll be back there to this in six months.
Six months from now, they'll be back at us again.
If we go and buy new signs out of my budget, and we have to change them again a third time.
You're gonna talk-
It's not gonna happen.
Well, I won't, I won't vote for that either. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Um, Kelly, tomorrow, if you get a chance, give him a call and let him know what we're planning, as well as the, uh, post office.
Being that it's a private road, we don't have to go through the formal hearing process like we did on the other roads, right?
Nope. We just have to have, uh, signs made for roads. And whatever the signs say, depending on where they're placed, we'll put private on them. That way, we'll try to stay out of that discussion.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, like, when we went through this with the, um, Whispering Pines.
Yes.
We had to have a public hearing, and we had to go through the whole nine yards to change it.
Well-
I don't know if we have to do that to drop it or not.
On one oh, on one oh three, we had some issues over, uh,
An East Street, but we'll still stop.
Yeah, but also on Cold River Road, those two private roads over there, remember?
Pine and, yeah, Pine Rock.
I say we just move forward with it and see what happens.
All right, so, motion was made and passed. Town officers report, Heidi, do you have anything you?
Um, we wrapped up tax collection and we ended up being, um, our delinquent taxes were up by ninety-some thousand dollars. The majority of that were three businesses in town who have taxes in the ballpark of like twenty-six thousand, forty-one thousand, uh, were not paid, so, or paid on time. Um, so that made up the bulk of that, otherwise, we would've been- we would've been around average. So, they have now, delinquent taxes have been officially turned over to delinquent tax collector Jacobowski.
Have you started any process?
Not yet. I'm gonna work on it this year. I'm still trying to get my, be under me as to what I need to do and doing stuff, so...
She's been printing and getting all of her letters ready to send out tonight.
Yes, unfortunately.
Have the said businesses since paid?
One has.
Only one? Okay.
They paid the original amount. They still have their penalty and interest to pay.
And the check was dated after the due date, as well as the postmark, was after the due date. So I had to turn it over.
There it goes.
Mm-hmm. Um, anything else?
That's all I have.
Heidi?
Do you have anything else?
Sorry, Bob.
What was the percentage on delinquents, do you know?
Oh, I'm not sure. So we brought in over five million dollars, and our delinquents were three hundred and three thousand.
Oh, okay.
Is that five percent, roughly?
Yeah. That's good. Thank you.
Kelly, Kelly A., do you have anything else?
Um, just that, uh, today, this morning, Cash and I went over the local and regional input questionnaire for the, uh, project summary for the Kingsley Bridge, to get going on that. Um, to get that out to Rutland Region and the commission.
Is there any chance they're gonna do that for winter?
The bridge?
Yeah.
No, no way.
Next year.
The town asked to, well, come find out. It wasn't on us to find the contractors.
It wasn't?
That's what I was told by one of the state guys.
Interesting.
So I don't know what to do, where to go.
I thought they were gonna, I'm gonna get a contractor. When we talked to him over there that day.
Yeah.
They were gonna get the contractor. And they were gonna, I guess, something like that. They were gonna get some names and send them down.
District Three sent me a whole sheet of contractors, and we picked out four different ones out of that. And we were told to contact them. I have a, a book in the filing cabinet here, says Kingsley Bridge on it, with all the information and stuff, and contacts and stuff, so it's open to anybody who wants to see it or to help with it.
How about the Gorgro? I know, we had a discussion on that recently. What do you...
Where's the Gorgro goes? I haven't heard nothing from the state.
It was supposed to get back to us, to an engineer.
To get back to us. They, they'd planned on having it done in November, which is this coming week.
Yep.
Haven't heard nothing. The road's still closed.
People still going through it?
Uh, not anymore.
Oh, no.
Had to reset barriers up there.
Oh.
And, yeah, we had issues about going around the lawn and stuff and moving the barriers. So I had taken another barrier up there and actually put them and lined up right by a ditch. And there's a tree in that ditch, so they wouldn't be able to go around the end of the barrier into the ditch anyways. But also, what I did, so they wouldn't borrow our sign, not bring it back. I put one of the big blocks on top of the posts of the sign, so they can't walk off with it.
Now, is other signs gonna impede you guys on this side getting to houses during snow time?
It, well, like we suggested to me, you did, uh, we'll put some no-through traffic signs up on this end, along with the road close sign.
Yep.
Just to open up that road, just to be able to move snow, not have to drive around them road close signs that sits in the middle of the road.
Yep.
And I'd like to wait and do that. I'd like to leave that sign in the middle of the road until we need, need to move it.
Yep.
Cash, we can access on this side with fire trucks if we need to?
Yes, definitely. You can actually access all the way to the other blocks, further blocks, barriers, by moving one sign that's up by Hanses.
Okay.
Got it? So that you actually can drive around there if, if a sign is moved. So it, it is accessible, but you can't drive all the way through, because the other end got really blocked up. Well...
Not surprised the state, because they like to go up that...
They were...
They're the causes, so let them figure it out.
They were really hammering on me to open it up, so won't give it.
I was just thinking, if there was one more thing, but on roads... Gloria, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. Um, at this time, I'd ask for an executive session on personnel issue.
Do I know any concerns with this?
Uh, okay, so we'll get it on tape. Bob, do you have anything?
No, I'm set for tonight.
Cash, you have anything?
I did have, it was the Gorgro.
All right. I don't have anything. Bob, do you have any? Rick, you have anything?
I don't.
Now I would ask for...
A move that we...
Going to executive session.
Enter an executive session for, I'll say, what, twenty minutes?
Yeah. On personnel issue, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And I think if the board has no objections, we'll have, uh, Heidi and Gloria come in, um, and Kelly.